Uh-oh. Okay. I may have, oh, boy, hang tight. One little, haha, one little glitch. I'll get that taken care of right now. There's a Facebook thing here. All right. Why is it not going to the library Facebook? Come on. Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Scheduled, okay. Hold tight, everybody. Okay, schedule, see if it teaches. Oh, well. New broadcast or just remove this destination for the broadcast and re-add it. All right, hang tight here. Ha-ha, best laid plans, right? All right, so let me remove that. And then we will add it. How about right now? Okay. Ah, I think we're on the right track now. We are on Facebook. All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to, uh, the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum. And I'm Jeff Messerman from the Cedarburg Public Library. We are hosting it here on our Facebook page. It's also on the CPL Radio page because I run the radio station. And I love to have material on our radio station as well. So with, uh, without further ado, I will back out and turn you, uh, turn you over to the experts. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the candidate forum for the candidates running for the Cedarburg School District School Board. This forum is being recorded on StreamYard on Tuesday, March 7th at 6:00 PM. Recording will not be edited and will be posted after the forum in its entirety on the Legal Women Voters of Ozaki County website and Facebook page, and also on the Cedarburg Public Library radio platform, which can be accessed from the library website. Please share the recording information with other voters in the school district. Tonight's forum is co-sponsored by the Legal Women Voters of Ozaki County and the Cedarburg Public Library. My name is Mary Farrelan-Lopeska. I'm a League member from Port Washington. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and it does not endorse or oppose any candidate or political party. Cedarburg Library is also nonpartisan. We have two candidates participating in tonight's forum. Katie Erickson and Connie Kincaid. Corey Kubiszka and Scott Sidney declined to participate. There are two positions to be filled in this election. School Board positions are nonpartisan. The names of these four candidates will appear on the ballot on Tuesday, April 4th for voters in the Cedarburg School District. The two candidates receiving the largest number of votes will serve a three-year term. Please become informed about your entire ballot and vote in the upcoming election. One way to learn more about your school board candidates is by going to vote411.org. This is a National League of Women Voters voter guide that our local league will be participating in this year. All of the candidates will be contacted by a League member inviting them to provide information and respond to three questions regarding the upcoming elections. Now, questions for tonight's forum were solicited ahead of time from the public through announcements in the newspaper, on the League website, and by email. The questions submitted were sorted and combined into topics by members of the League. Only questions relevant to the school board position were accepted. Now, I'd like to introduce our two candidates in tonight's forum. We have Kate Erickson and Connie Kincaid. As far as the forum format for tonight's forum, each of the two candidates will have 90 seconds to make an opening statement. They will make their opening statements in the order of, um, that was determined before our forum began tonight. And Ellie Anderson, another League member, will be our timekeeper. And Ellie will show up signs, "One minute, 30 seconds, and stop." The opening statements sent will be followed by responses to questions that were submitted by the public. Each candidate will have one minute or up to one minute to respond to the same questions. After the question period, candidates will have two minutes to summarize their positions on issues in their closing statements. I will ask that candidates mute themselves when not speaking and then to remember to unmute when it's their turn. Now, the, the opinions and thoughts expressed by the candidates are their own, are not sponsored or endorsed by the League or the Cedarburg Library. Now, all the candidates have chosen to make an effort to run for elected office. Therefore, they are subjecting themselves to the scrutiny of the voters. Whatever you may think of each candidate's position on issues, they deserve our respect for their willingness to serve in public office. And now we'll begin with opening statements. Connie will give, um, will begin.
Thank you so much. Good evening. I'd, I'd like to thank the members of the Voter Services Committee of the League of Women Voters, as well as Jeff Messerman and the staff of the library, um, for their partnership in getting this forum all together. I am really excited to hear questions that voters have and have the opportunity to answer those. And I'd like to thank, uh, candidate Kate Erickson for also being, uh, up for participating this evening. A bit about me, I'm a mom to a Parkview student. I've served on our, uh, Parkview PTO Board since 2019. I've held the seats of Secretary, two-term President, and, uh, currently am Vice President. Thanks, Ellie. I'll get used to looking at the minute mark and all that. Um, I've chaired, excuse me, I've co-chaired our Veterans Day processions over the last two years, our Scholastic Book Fair and Stuff the Bus initiatives. I'm a member of the Cedarburg School District Nutrition and Wellness Committee. I serve as Secretary for the City of Cedarburg Diversity Committee. And I'm a member of several Ozaki County groups that advocate for disability rights and awareness. I'm a frequent attendee and participant at our council meetings, our school district meetings, and our county meetings. I ran for our county supervisor seat last spring, and I'm happiest when I'm volunteering for the community in one way or another. I love Cedarburg, our students, and I'm so excited to have the opportunity to speak this evening. Thanks, Ellie.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, Kate, you're next.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to participate. Connie, it is fantastic to see you too. A little bit about me, uh, my name is Kate Erickson. I have lived in Cedarburg for well over a decade now. I currently have a sixth grader at Webster Middle School, so I definitely have a vested interest in the future of the school district. For a profession, I am a history professor at the Milwaukee Area Technical College. Um, I have been in that position for over a decade, um, after beginning my teaching career at UW-Milwaukee. I am also a board member of the Wisconsin Indian Education Association, uh, which is a statewide organization that looks at educational issues that our indigenous communities are facing, as well as making sure to share the history and the culture of our indigenous populations in the state. Uh, and I'm also the Communications Director for the organization. Do a lot of volunteering, a lot of, uh, community speeches and presentations. I'm also a member of the Milwaukee FBI Community Roundtable, which seeks to, um, bring to light, uh, and to stop some of the injustices that our communities are facing in southeastern Wisconsin. So those are just a few of the things that I bring to the table. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, now on to the questions. Okay, Connie, we will begin now with you for the first question. What experience do you have working in education? And specifically, how have you participated in the Cedarburg School District in the past few years?
Ellie, you ready with the timer? Okay, um, so my background in education, I worked as an aide during, um, the height of the pandemic in a neighboring school district. So I was in person working with, uh, our youngest learners. So specific to our, um, public school system, that's my background where that, where that lands. I do also have, uh, the para-professional coursework training done. So should it ever make sense to step into that role, that's an area I'm open to. As far as participation, specifically in our Cedarburg School District, I was a weekly volunteer up until, uh, March 13th of 2020, and very much enjoyed that time. I serve as PTO President, which I mentioned, and with that comes being a part of all of the committees and being helpful wherever you can be helpful, showing up wherever you can show up. And, um, so that, I think I'm at my time, Ellie. I'm sorry, I'm trying to get used to when you show that, so hopefully I answered that. Thank you. For, yeah, sorry, I'll get used to it.
Thank you, Connie. Okay, and Kate, the same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, that's quite all right. Um, so I have been an educator for over 20 years. Actually, one of my first teaching jobs was as an undergraduate, uh, during winter break, spring break, and into, you know, my early summer vacation, but not quite so much for the Shawna Gresham School District where I grew up. I was actually a substitute special ed aide, uh, throughout K through 12, so middle, elementary, uh, and high school, and that was quite an eye-opening experience. Uh, right now I have college students, so I have people fresh out of high school, all the way up to, um, elders that are coming back for fun to learn. So teaching, uh, writing curriculum, all of those things. As far as Cedarburg is concerned, prior to the pandemic and while my daughter was in elementary school, I volunteered in the classrooms. Uh, but I have been attending the Cedarburg School District, uh, monthly meetings and committee meetings and streaming them for, uh, I believe it's at least the past three years. Uh, and I also ran for school board last year.
Thank you. Okay, Kate will, um, begin with you for question two. What will you bring to the Cedarburg School Board if elected?
Oh, my, um, experience as an educator. Uh, I think it's extremely important to have at least one educator on a school board. I have to regularly go through, uh, professional development, teaching license recertification, uh, keeping up on best practices. Um, I write curriculum. I use it in my classrooms, uh, for the history department. I order all the textbooks. I find them. I vet them. I present them. I have worked, uh, with behavioral issues in the, uh, MATC schools before, um, dealing with students who have behavioral issues, but maybe are struggling in terms of their academic performance. So I bring the background of an educator to the school district, um, in hopes that my skills can help improve the district, uh, now and well into the future.
Thank you. And Connie?
Would you mind just repeating the question one more time? Thank you.
What will you bring to the Cedarburg School Board if elected?
I believe I have many qualities that are well-suited to serving on a board. The one that comes to mind that I think is the most important right now is community partnerships and just having an eye on what communication looks like in a real-world perspective. So, uh, I don't stream meetings, but I do attend them, and whenever folks ask questions about our district policies or who to reach out to, upcoming meetings, things like that, I am, I share widely, and I'm very comfortable doing that. So I think that having someone on a board who is available for office hours, who is absolutely transparent in their communication styles and open it, open to phone calls, in-person, office hours, is really valuable. So I bring the availability and the passion for that. Um, so I think that would be first and foremost, the one that comes to mind, just strategic partnerships with our community and communicating those where we're at within the district and what we can be doing together.
Thank you, Connie. And Connie, we'll start with you for this third question. What do you see as the biggest strengths in the Cedarburg School District? What are the biggest strengths in the school district?
We have a lot of strengths. Um, quite frankly, as a person who's served on PTO boards and has seen how involved parents are and how much they care about their kids' education, I really feel like we have a phenomenal amount of parent involvement and engagement in our district, and that's a strength that not every district has. So it's something that really needs to be appreciated, valued, and leveraged, in a sense, um, to have that community involvement continue on moving forward. I don't know how much time I have. Ellie, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I'm getting used to this. 30 seconds. Um, so the, the family engagement is very strong in our district, and of course, we have students that go, their achievement levels are incredible. And I am one who celebrates achievement in all kinds of ways, whether that's academic or they're growing as their, you know, personhood and their athletics and extracurriculars. So I just see a diverse group of students that are hugely talented in our district, and that's an incredible strength.
Thanks, Connie. And Kate, what do you see as the biggest strengths in the district?
Connie hit the nail right on the head. I mean, it's, it's the community, honestly. Um, it, it never fails. It's, and it's not just the parents who have kids in the district as well. It's the community at large. Um, when I go to parent-teacher conferences, whether it's when my daughter was in elementary school or now at the middle school, there are parents everywhere, and they're asking questions, and they want to know what's going on, and they want to be involved. Um, we have parents that come to school board meetings and committee meetings. Uh, it's fantastic, though, when you see, uh, like our robotics group from the high school, you know, going to these huge competitions, you know, across the country and doing amazingly well, just the, the support they have for those types of, uh, activities, the sports, uh, the arts, our music, our theater groups, you name it. You know, the fact that the community is so invested in the school, it's huge because not a lot of communities have that. And I really think that's why we need people who are going to engage with the community to make sure we stay on top.
Thank you. And Kate, question four, we'll begin with you. Who should be involved in creating or modifying the curriculum?
That's one of those all stakeholders types of things. Um, it's, it's it's one of those areas where, when the district is hiring and they're looking for staff for particular subject areas. When we are looking at reviewing curriculum, those are some of the first people you need to be going to. Um, the teachers that we have in the classrooms are the ones who are going through regular professional development. They're the ones in the classrooms who are seeing what works, what doesn't work. Um, they often have the suggestions on what we should try. Um, we need to start looking to other school districts to see, uh, what they may be using. Maybe it's something better than what we have. Uh, maybe it's something we can use to expand on, uh, but it should not just be the school board determining curriculum. It, uh, really is an entire stakeholder issue. So we really do need to be looking to the, the, the experts that we hire within the district and using their opinions, uh, when it comes to curriculum development or review.
Thank you, Kate. And Connie, who should be involved in creating or modifying the curriculum?
Kate shared a lot, and I don't have too much to add to it. I would say that at this point in time, there's really that question of whether our district should be creating curriculum or modifying to begin with. Excuse me, or if, you know, outsourcing those to companies that prepare those is the way to go. So at this point in time, I am supportive of our educators and administrators going through the, the cycle that we have for our curriculum and really honing in on whether it is meeting the needs of our current students. If it's not, then there's space to kind of adjust that, uh, cycle of curriculum review and bring in our grade-level educators. I'm also in support of bringing in, um, the voices of our paras and our aides in those, uh, areas as well. So all stakeholders, but also communicating the process a little bit more openly to people in the, in the community who aren't necessarily in the buildings. Um, so, yeah, I, that's where, that's, that's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Connie, question five, we'll start with you. Do you feel the school is doing enough to address the mental health of students through the emotional, social curriculum being taught in our schools?
Uh, was the question, are we doing enough?
Yes.
Uh, I, I appreciate where we're at as far as staffing goes. Um, I think that we, as a district, could look into bringing in counselors at our grade level. I've heard from parents at the elementary school level that that's something that, that they would like. Um, and of course, neighboring districts do have that. So that's an area that I think is worth discussing and looking at our resources as, as a district and hiring practices. Um, so that's one piece, one piece there. As far as actual curriculum and what's shared currently, uh, I don't personally have any problems with what we have. Um, sorry, the, the screen froze there. Uh, I think there's always room for improvement, of course. Um, that's, that's a goal. It's a partnership between parents and the schools. It's not the schools providing everything, uh, but certainly those hours in the classroom, those emotional needs are going to be, they're going to be happening along with education and, um, yeah, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. And Kate, do you feel the school is doing enough to address the mental health of students through the emotional, social curriculum being taught in their schools?
I think they could always do more. Um, I believe, you know, a, addressing the staffing issues, I don't think we have enough counselors. I don't think we have enough school psychologists. Um, I saw no issues with the curriculum, uh, that we had starting at the beginning of the year. Uh, in fact, the first full year that curriculum was implemented, Cedarburg Schools achieved, exceeds expectations in all five schools. It had never been done before, um, and that was only after, uh, that curriculum had been fully implemented. Our students suffered during the pandemic. Uh, mental health issues amongst our students are running rampant. Uh, there's a lot of stress. There's a lot of bullying going on. Um, and social-emotional learning, you know, oftentimes is used as a classroom management tool, but we really need to be looking at how we can support our students in school, but then also what resources can we provide for the parents, uh, so that they have the ability to help their children outside of school.
Thank you. Kate, okay, this question for you. What is your position regarding the current human growth and development curriculum in the district?
Uh, I am not a fan. Uh, this is one of the questions that came up quite a bit last year. Um, I, again, in the, in terms of this curriculum, we're not going far enough. Um, from what I've been hearing, and, and I just got the email, my daughter, you know, she's going to have to sign up for the sixth grade, uh, human growth and development lesson. Uh, what I'm hearing from a lot of students, uh, and parents of students who have gone through the program is that it is not adequate. It is not covering enough. Um, and I know there are definitely complaints in the community as far as, well, what, what are we covering and when, how are we covering it? Um, my position is you need to have prepared students for the future. And if they are not given all the proper tools, um, at age-appropriate times and at scientific, uh, and age-appropriate materials, um, how are we going to make sure that they can make good decisions in the future? So I really, I really do think we need to do more. And if parents want to opt their students out, they always have the option to do that, but we should be offering more.
Thank you, Kate. And Connie, what is your position regarding the current human growth and development curriculum in the, in the district?
Yeah, so this, uh, this was actually one of the first questions that someone asked me. Um, and when it comes down to it, I'm very well aware that we have, uh, resources shared, um, within the grounds of our district, and we also have volunteers that have a program that's held at the, um, Cedarburg Police Department. And there are families that choose to do both. There are families that choose to opt out of one and take the other. I am not opposed to this, uh, what we have on campus being reviewed again. Um, it has a very long, long history in our district, and I think the role of any board member is to be open to revisiting curriculum when it's brought to their attention that it's not meeting student needs. Um, there's, there are, there's curriculum that is specific to our, more specific to our students with, uh, disabilities that I'd be interested in looking more into, and having those continued, those conversations start up again. I'm in favor of that. Uh, you know, without question, I think it's very important that board members are able to listen to everyone.
Thank you. Okay, Connie, uh, number seven question. How would you work with the administration to support teachers and improve teacher retention? How would you work with the administration to support teachers and improve teacher retention?
Sure. So I would like to think that over the, you know, the course of the past several years, that, um, our administrators in the Cedarburg School District, uh, know my name and know that I'm happy to ask questions. Um, and there's a respect-filled relationship there. Uh, that's, you know, currently my hope, so I would bring that into a board role. It wouldn't be anything new necessarily. Um, so that would be one thing, just having a relationship already that's positive and respect-filled. And then insofar as teacher retention, I think that teachers have a, uh, teachers, educators, really any of our staff members, stay in the district when they feel supported, when they feel respected, and when they don't feel like they are being attacked, right? So if, as a parent, I'm showing those that they're respected, um, and not attacking, then that's, again, something I bring into a board position. So those are just part, that's who I am, so I don't see that changing necessarily, but it would be used to the nth degree on the board.
Thank you, Connie. And Kate, how would you work with the administration to support teachers and, and improve teacher retention?
Uh, much like I would when working with the administration of various departments at MATC. You have to have a, there's a, there's a two-way exchange. You have to have the ability to see where teachers are coming from, see where the profession is going. Uh, honestly, we're, we're facing possibly a, a very large teaching crisis, teacher shortage in the future, and not just Cedarburg, but other districts as well. And we are going to be fighting for a smaller and smaller pool of quality educators. We need to make sure that our teachers are being supported, um, not only in their day-to-day activities, but in their professional development. You know, we need to be willing to listen to our teachers, uh, to see what they need and support them, because if we don't do that, they will leave. And it's not cheap to constantly hire and train new staff, pairs, and teachers, because when they leave, that whole process starts over again. So then you look into, you know, how much is this costing the district in the long run?
Okay, Kate, um, how do you believe diversity should be integrated into the curriculum and resources available in the media centers?
Diversity is one of those issues that the school district is actually facing right now. Um, for several years, I had spoken out kind of in my capacity as, as a history professor and as a member of the Wisconsin Indian Education, that unfortunately Cedarburg School District, uh, was not following state statutes on Act 31 as far as, uh, diversity in teaching about Wisconsin's indigenous populations. And in the DPI's preliminary findings, they found that, you know, in fact, Cedarburg was not, uh, following state statutes. It is imperative that we are providing well-rounded educations for these students because we're preparing them for a world that does not look like Cedarburg. Our world is rapidly changing. We need to have a wide variety of materials that is going to introduce different cultures and different mindsets to our students so that when they do graduate and they move on, they can be successful. Um, and unfortunately, the district doesn't seem, uh, to be up to the standard it should be right now.
Thank you. And Connie, how do you believe diversity should be integrated into the curriculum and resources available in the media center?
Sure. So as far as just the resources that are in our media centers, um, this was something that came up, uh, over the course of the summer with, um, the district and PTO representatives. And at this point in time, our district has a rubric to basically vet, uh, books that teachers have requested, or, um, or, let me think here for a minute. Yes, the teachers have requested. That would either be in the classrooms or in the IMC eventually. So we do have something in place that has been worked through over the summer. I do think there's room in that rubric to get a little bit more detail and get that out further into the community so that we're all on the same page of what, what we currently have right now. Um, I've shared that I think the rubric leaves a little bit too much openness, that it's, it's not quite as specific as it could be, um, to be helpful, as helpful as it could be to stakeholders. So that's an area, as a board member, I would be encouraging our administration to continue those conversations and be mindful of what's going out into the public. Um, there, there's a, there's policies and procedures if people have, if, if anyone has, oh, sorry, yes, the card. Thank you.
That, that's okay. It's important, I think, for you to finish your sentence, finish your thought. You don't need to stop mid-sentence, okay?
Oh.
Yeah, okay. All right, uh, Connie, uh, you'll start in this question. Which, what factors will you consider when balancing budget requests from different departments? What factors will you consider when balancing budget requests from different departments?
Yeah, so I think, um, as someone that is really quite particular when it comes to budgeting and reviews our, you know, each line item, when it comes down to it, there are things in our district that could potentially fall on other people to fund rather than our district. And I think that when it comes down to it, there are things in our district that could potentially fall on other people to fund rather than our district. And I think that that's a conversation that's going on. I'm not in those, you know, minutia conversations right now, but when you think about our PTOs and the things that we fund and the strategic partnerships that are in our community, I think there's room for us to look at that budget and really go line by line. I'm comfortable with that. I would hope other board members are as well. And as far as just requests in general, where is it falling in the scope of our strategic plan as a district? Really, that would be the, the high, higher, you know, the hierarchy there. What, where are we at with the strategic plan and who's asking for what?
Thank you. And Kate, what factors will you consider when balancing budget requests from different departments?
It really comes down to, I guess, kind of a holistic type of, of look at things, really. We just had a big referendum. There were a lot of investments that were made in the district in terms of building facilities, technology. We need to make sure we're staying on top of simple things like roofs at West Lawn or at Webster. You really do have to look at prioritizing, you know, what, what do we have as far as budgeting for buildings? What do we have as far as budgeting for special activities and whatnot? It, it really comes down to, and I think our buildings and grounds and others, other committees in the, the school board do a pretty good job of, of planning out for certain things over so many years, but really it's, it's, it's a need space and very much so like Connie said, thinking outside the box. You know, our PTOs do so much for the schools, but where else could we look? Are there grants that we could, you know, look for so that some of this money isn't necessarily coming from our budget, but from outside?
Thank you. And Kate, do you favor or oppose live streaming school board meetings and why?
Oh, I love streaming. I, you know what? It's one of those things where I really did enjoy when the district was actually live streaming their own meetings. Unfortunately, they stopped that. And there were at least one meeting, I know for sure, where when it was posted to the district YouTube page, it had been edited. And I am not a fan of that. I believe that all school board monthly meetings, as well as all school board committee meetings, should be livestreamed. They should be livestreamed. They should be archived. I would go so much as to say is we should allow public comment via the livestream, whether it's the monthly meeting or the committee meetings. There are other departments and committees within our own city government that allow for that online participation. And if the district really wants to be transparent and really wants the input of the entire community, they're going to follow through with doing things like that.
Thanks, Kate. And Connie, do you favor or oppose live streaming school board meetings? Why, why not?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of live streaming any committee meetings. That's a practice that's done at our city level, the county level as well. So if we have the ability to do that, I'm in favor of it. I think just double checking in with our administrators as to the reason, you know, why we're not currently doing it would be good. If it's a matter of not having someone on staff available those hours, then can we as a district think a little bit creatively and get volunteers to help with that? I think that that is a, a way to engage parents that would like to be involved. As far as, I, yeah, I think it was just, do I, am I in favor? Yes, I'm in favor of live streaming, recording, archiving. I think all of those things are important. And we're all human. We're never going to say anything perfectly, but it's helpful to have a record of what's going on in our district.
Okay, thank you. And Connie, this question, start with, I'll start with you. What do you feel are the areas for improvement to be made in the Cedarburg School District? What are areas for improvement in the school district?
I'm very cognizant that we're coming off of two years of, you know, a lot of divide and areas where we haven't been able to communicate as effectively with one another as a community as perhaps we would have otherwise been able to. So I think the biggest challenge right now is just finding those spaces where there's been a disconnect and sharing the resources so that disconnect isn't there anymore. So a, for instance, would be individuals feeling like curriculum isn't available to see. The district does have that on our site. It is always updated, but not everyone knows how to navigate our site. So just sharing where those things are and not thinking any question is a silly or unimportant question and just sharing facts, I think is a great way to remedy that kind of disconnect that exists in still some of our pockets within the district. I think we have come a long way and I'm really, really grateful for that. So it's just a continued effort in that respect.
Thanks, Connie. And Kate, what do you feel are the areas for improvement in the district?
Um, I would say one of the areas is transparency in decision-making. You know, why, why are certain decisions made? You know, how were decisions arrived at? One of the big issues is staffing. We are understaffed, very much so. You know, I'm concerned, especially at the para level, where I know we do have students who have I E Ps and five oh fours, five oh fours that aren't being met. We have to look at academic performance. I know that is a, a huge issue and, you know, a big, a big source of pride for Cedarburg, but you know, are we really doing everything we can in terms of how education is changing? Are we keeping up with the times? Communication is huge. I agree with Connie, but I would say transparency in why things are done, as well as actually just being open to communicating in general. You know, I know people are frustrated when you email school board members and don't get responses for simple questions. So working on community building, that's a big one.
Well, thank you. So we've come to the end of our question and answer period. And so now we'll have your two-minute closing statement, your summarization of, of your positions. And Connie, you start with the opening statement. So Kate, we'll start with you for the closing statement, and you have up to two minutes.
Sounds good. Thank you. Well, thank you again for allowing us to participate. I think it's vitally important that anyone running for office be willing to answer questions. Because especially as a school board member, you're going to have a lot of questions being asked of you by the community, and you have to be able to show that you, you have the ability to communicate and to answer those questions. One of the biggest reasons why I'm running for the school board and why I ran last time is for the students. That's why I do it. You know, it, it isn't for some political agenda or political game. It's literally for the students. I have seen Cedarburg graduates struggle in my classroom with critical thinking skills. And it's a shame, you know, obviously, you know, math, science, and reading, those are super important. Those are the basics. Yes, we have to, you know, have those foundations, but there's so much more that can be done. And being an educator and seeing where there are gaps, where there are shortfalls, where things could be made better, that's what I want to be a part of. We need to keep the standards that we have, but there's always room for improvement. And I really do think that we need school board members, not just like myself, but, but Connie as well. I mean, Connie, she is a communicator. She knows the policies. Are she and I, you know, if we end up on the school board, always going to greet? No. But both of us are the type of people where if there's a problem, let's talk about it. Let's, let's find some solutions, you know? If, if there are issues, let's work it out. And I think that's what's missing from the board right now, you know, that, that ability to collaborate with each other and to collaborate with the community. And that's something I want to be a part of, bringing back to the board so that the community can not only just be proud of the school district in general, but of the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And, and Connie, your closing statement, up to two minutes.
Thank you once again. This has been a great evening. I feel honored to have had some time to speak to the questions asked. As we all know, getting thoughts down to one minute and having a quick opening statement and closing statement doesn't always do justice to getting to know a candidate. I encourage anyone listening this evening to visit Connie Kincaid dot com to learn more about me and to reach out to me via email at connect@ConnieKincaid.com. I value communication and hearing from all constituents in ways that work best for you. I will be available. This is my highest priority. In this election, you have the opportunity to, to elect two individuals to the Cedarburg School District Board of Education. I believe that voters deserve representatives that are respectful of all viewpoints, are dedicated to supporting educators and their students, understand the policies and mission that guide our district, and that have an eye not only on our school system, but are committed to building positive relationships with elected representatives that make important decisions that impact student success. I am passionate about continuing to serve our community in this way, and I'm proud to extend my second vote to Kate Erickson, as I believe that she is as well. I look forward to continuing to earn your vote in the weeks ahead, and I encourage you to follow my campaign on Facebook at Connie Kincaid for School Board. And of course, most importantly, be sure to make your plan to vote on or before April 4th and have your voice heard. I thought I only had a minute, so I don't have anything else. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters, to the Cedarburg Public Library, to everyone that's watching this evening and will watch when it's posted. Thank you.
Well, this concludes the forum for this evening, and we certainly hope that it's given you, the voters, the information that will help you cast an informed vote on Tuesday, April 4th, for Cedarburg District School Board members. And we certainly thank Kate and Connie for participating tonight in the forum. And also on behalf of the league, we thank the Public Library in Cedarburg for co-sponsoring this forum. So thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Always our honor to work with the League of Women Voters. So thanks, everybody, for tuning in. We'll end the broadcast here. It'll be available on our Facebook page. It has to process a little bit, but it's probably should be ready to review almost immediately. And obviously, they mentioned where it will be found after that. So we'll end the broadcast here, and thank you, everybody.